At this time, I would like to reconvene the meeting of the Suffolk Central Board of Education for September 3, 2019. Let the record reflect that time is 8:28 PM. We're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask that after the pledge, please remain standing.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Carol Harsh, who passed away last week. Thank you. Action item 1.09, minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2019. Do I have a motion? Mr. Donnelly? Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shapiro? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I have a quick question for the district clerk. Did I do something wrong? Are we good?
I'm just looking at it.
Okay, just checking. Just checking.
I was listening.
Okay, okay. You gave me this look like I messed something up.
Not at all.
Okay. All right, thank you. You'll let me know. Okay. All right. Oh, you know what? I apologize. We did skip 1.0... See, where were you? 1.06, Public Hearing on the Code of Conduct. This would be an opportunity for many members of the public to speak about the code of conduct that's on the agenda for tonight. So this would be the opportunity. Okay. Seeing as there are no comments, we will move on with the agenda. 1.10, Acting Superintendent's Comments.
I've got quite a few tonight. A very exciting day today, and even more exciting one tomorrow. This morning, we had our staff orientation. We started district-wide at the high school and then broke up into our buildings. Our highlights from this morning included John Lancia singing the National Anthem and the Suffolk marching band drum line illustrating how hard work and teamwork can really make an impact. It was really exciting to see the kids and how excited they were to perform for the staff this morning. In addition, themes included finding the awesome in an ordinary and recognizing the amazing things that happen here in Suffolk Central every day. Both today and at the board facilities walkthrough last week, we saw the outcome of buildings and grounds, hard work over the summer, which included a number of highlights at the high school, the Jumbotron, and the generator. At Slutzburg, the new transformer and the beautiful paintings. At Viola, classroom and library facelifts and renovations. At Cherry Lane, we saw the installation of the new security window and main office reservation renovation. The exploration den is in at Connor and almost complete. The generator work at the middle school is almost complete. And at Montebello, we saw the sidewalk and the stairs to help with maneuvering around the grounds of the building and helping with drop off and pickup. District-wide, we also saw the installation of many of the new LED lights and the sensory hallways installed. New teacher orientation was also held last week, led by two administrative interns, E&amp;L teachers, Evelyn Sanchez and Kim Wojciechowski, who ran the orientation as part of their internship. And they did an outstanding job. We have an outstanding crop of new teachers and with a great induction into the district by Mrs. Sanchez and Mrs. Wojciechowski. And one of those new teachers, we're very excited about, Eric... Well, we're excited about all of them, but in particular, we're excited about Ariel Senzo, who will be a math and special ed teacher at the high school, who will also be the advisor for the robotics club.
Thank you. Very exciting updates, and I think it's great to have a robotics coach in place with school starting tomorrow. 1.11, Public Participation. This is public participation on action items only. Every speaker will have three minutes. You wish to approach the podium and address action items only. Okay. Seeing as there are none, we will close this portion of the meeting and move to action items. Are there any items that need to be polled by board members?
I'd like to poll 2.02. 2.08. 2.09. 2.12. 2.25.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a few things I want to poll. 2.01. 2.11. 2.19.
Because the last one was 2.19?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I've got 2.01, 02, 08, 09, 11, 12, 15, and 19. Does anybody have anything else?
With 2.25.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said 2.25. I'm sorry.
Can you say those again? We'll work faster.
Sure. 2.01, 2.02, 2.08, 2.09, 2.11, 2.12, 2.19, and 2.25. So then we will use a consent agenda for action items 2.03 through 2.07, 2.10, 2.13 through 2.18, and 2.20 through 2.24. Is there a motion for this consent agenda? Okay, Mr. McKenzie? Second?
Second.
Mr. Cairns? All those in... Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. 2.01. Is there a motion? Okay. Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cairns? Discussion. Now, before you get into discussion, there is one edit that actually needs to be made. There is one individual whose probation end date is actually incorrect on the personnel report, so we're gonna make a quick... It's a quick resolution just to update it here tonight, and then a corrected version will be uploaded to board docs. So I need a motion to correct the probation end date for Dines Morales from August 31, 2023, to September 2, 2023. Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Reamer? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Okay, now you can have discussion on 2.01.
I just have a comment regarding number five on the personnel report that I will reserve until we discuss 2.19.
I think we should do them together.
Well, if you want to discuss...
They're related.
I understand. But in terms of the personnel report, are we having discussion on it or are we voting on it? Because we need to vote on the report.
I mean, I guess we vote on it, right? Yeah, we can vote on the report.
Okay. So we're gonna vote on the report then. So 2.01. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Wait, we can have a discussion as it relates to 2.19 now. Can we not?
You can, but you still ultimately have to vote on the report.
Right. At the end.
Well, I'd like to vote on the report, but I need to... I need to also remove something from the report so that I can vote on the rest of the report.
Well, so then we could... That's what we're saying. We want to discuss that so that we can vote on it or pull it and vote on that separately.
So then, is there a motion to remove something from the personnel report?
Okay, so we can pull item number five from the personnel report so that we can discuss that separately from the personnel report.
I have an item from number two.
Yes, I have an item from number two.
What item from number two? Is it 2.19?
I have number two on the personnel report.
So let's think about the best way to do this, but we're not entirely sure. If I had known this was gonna be the case, we probably could have amended the agenda to move 2.19 to the top and done that first.
Well, you can discuss it at the same time.
So there's a motion on the floor right now for the personnel report. So that's where we are. If you want to discuss something relating to the personnel report, then let's discuss it. Otherwise, we're gonna have to vote in.
Well, you're gonna have the same discussion twice is what I'm alluding to. If you want to have the same discussion twice, we can do that. I'm asking to have 219 and those two items.
Then I think just have the discussion. Have the discussion on item five.
Okay, that's fine with me. So item number five is filling the spot of the Director of Instruction, Curriculum and Instruction. This particular item, I don't feel should be on the personnel report tonight or as a separate agenda item. I think that we haven't had this position at Suffolk Central School District ever, and to add this without a public discussion prior to the date you're voting on it isn't proper. Just some background information. The past couple of weeks, I've been monitoring social media, and the individual referring to this personnel report and item number 219 went to leadership training, although not in a leadership role. She was announced at the safety meeting that there would be a Director of Instruction on 9-3 before the board even voted on it. It was announced today at Suffolk High School that there would be a new Director of Instruction today without the board ever having voted on it. And again, we've never had this position before, so there should be a public discussion, in my opinion, because we're allocating public funds to fill the position. You know, in the past, Mr. Curran, you've actually advocated for having a public discussion regarding administrative hires prior to the voting date. So you've done that before, and now this just gets thrown on the agenda without ever having a public discussion. I just think that the whole thing was poorly planned. We had a new acting superintendent come in with no support system in the instruction department, when we had an acting superintendent who has three people serving under her, one of which was already covering some of her work while she was operating in a different role in that department. You know, there's several different ways. This could have been as a contract attached to this. This could have been done as an MOA. And going forward, this is going to be a job that is now on the books at Suffolk Central School District that has never been here before, and I'm a little bit concerned about where we're going with it forward. If, you know, how quickly this could be filled again. You know, it's a temporary position now, but that doesn't mean that that's what somebody could be hired there permanently later, and that's a source of concern for me. That's all I have.
Well, as a board, we would have the authority to either fill this position in the future or not fill this position in the future. We would also have the authority to abolish this position once this temporary term is over. I mean, and that's what this is. Everybody's clear. This is a temporary appointment. It is not a permanent appointment. This is, again, if you read the contract, it's there. This is a temporary hire. So the difference for me, and since you brought up public discussions, is that we don't, at least in my opinion, don't need to have a public discussion prior to appointing this. This is just like any other... And any other position that would be put on as a recommendation by the superintendent. Whether or not we're creating a new position, yep. If we are, then that's fine, and I'm okay with that, because, like I said, there is no obligation on our part to fill it again, nor is there an obligation on our part to keep it as an active role. So this is, again, my opinion, vastly different than having a discussion on, say, creating a Director of Facilities role that is a permanent position here at Suffolk. So again, I mean, it's really up to everybody how they feel, but my opinion is to let this go and to vote on it.
I'm glad that in your opinion, it's okay, but the reason that we have public discussions is so that folks in the audience can have an opinion also. That's the reason why we discuss things in public, to give transparency to the people and let them know why it is that we're doing the things that we're doing.
And there's no reason we can't do that right now.
Right, but now people are voting on it the same day that you're having the discussion.
You've known since late July that we were doing this.
No, that wasn't in public.
You've known since July. You've known what the stipend was going to be, so this isn't really a surprise.
It's not new to me. Again, it's not new to me, but it's new to the public, and people are going to be voting on this tonight, right? It was given to us on a chart and said, "We'll discuss this at a later date." And now the date comes, and the public... I, when I received that chart, maybe to my fore, assumed that it was going to go before the people, and people were gonna have an opportunity to digest it and maybe give their feedback at the podium, instead of just speaking on action items. Does anybody have any questions? And then we have a discussion, and they can't say anything about it. So it's a little bit different when you're sitting at the table and you know what happens, and the folks out there don't know what happens. There's a big difference. And it just, in my opinion, it's just this whole thing, you know, we're backfilling positions now. When everything had sort of calmed down a little bit, now we're backfilling positions. I just think that the whole thing was just very poorly planned, that one.
Folks, sorry if you feel that way, but again, you've known, and this entire board has known about the backfill for the last six weeks, so this isn't a surprise.
Again, not to me, it's not.
No, but you're making it sound as if...
There is a surprise to them, because they have no knowledge of this, because it was never discussed in a public forum before.
Oh, that's all I'm saying.
The contract was a surprise. We had never seen a contract before. The contract was on the agenda, and as far as having a contract like that, I don't know why it just couldn't be a memorandum of full understanding of why we need to create a new position to fill that position, even though you say to me, "Oh, it'll be abolished." Who knows if it will be abolished? So I personally don't feel comfortable that you're expensing taxpayer money and creating another position, another $140,000 position, when you still have other positions. So I'm not comfortable with this.
Okay, so to be clear, we're not creating a $140,000 position?
Why?
That money is already... That individual already gets paid the vast majority of that.
And there's another job that's still out there.
No?
There will not be a destination to backfill that position. It's still there, and it's still there.
Okay? There's nobody filling in? Nobody's being paid for it?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, not yet. Okay.
And just for the record, my opposition is to the position itself. It is not any reflection whatsoever of the person who is being proposed to fill the position. It is just to the position itself being voted on without having had a discussion in public to let folks know what's going on and why we're doing what we're doing before the day that it's being voted on and after they've been given the opportunity to speak on it publicly if they have an opposition to it now that they hear this new information.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay. I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. 2.02.
I pulled that. I just needed to know about the three custodial workers. Was there a turnover or... Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. 2.02. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Reamer?
I want to say again. There are three new custodians. I didn't know if there was turnover or...
There was. When I came in, they said there were five vacancies in the custodial worker area from, I believe, retirements and over resignations.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Abstentions? Motion passes. 2.08.
I pulled that. I just did...
Is there a motion?
It's a good thing I'm the president.
Is there a... I'm sorry. Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shapiro? Discussion?
Okay. I pulled this item because I wasn't sure what it was. I tried to go back and see why did the audit across the road, because they did last year, so I tried to go back to last year and see if it was there and if something brand new.
It is. He's a nationally renowned speaker largely on the topic of middle schools. Mr. Fox and the team that attended the Essential Schools to Watch Conference last fall heard him there and thought he was amazing and would really be beneficial to the SMS community. And so we were, like, he's like booked out like a year and a half advance, so we were able to get him for our March conference day, so pray no snow. And we're really excited to be able to host him, and that will be funded out of Title II funds.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. 2.09. Is there a motion? Mr. Shapiro? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
I would move to table that item, 2.11.
2.09.
I'm sorry. My fault. Treasure.
Okay.
2.08. I just thought you had a comment on it. In order to get these reports and get more detail in these reports, again, I brought it up in the last meeting that we get access to WindCap. There are things that are on this report that are not really detailed. Things are put together like teacher salaries, supplies, equipment, textbooks, summer school. It's all in one line instead of separating it out on this report. This is also the report for June. There should be... We should be getting July ready. We need to get these reports more on a timely basis. So those are my two comments. I know that, because I was always not here tonight, but, you know, I would like to get more information.
Anybody have any other... Excuse me. Any other comments? Okay. And then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions?
Standing.
Okay. Ms. Reamer? Motion passes. Action item 2.11. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cairns? Discussion?
I would request this item to be tabled at this point.
Are you making a motion to table?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cairns? So this is to vote on tabling 2.11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. 2.12. Not sure who pulled that.
I did.
Okay. Is there a motion? Ms. Reamer? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion?
I know that we had given a stipend for the budget process. Will this incorporate that stipend amount?
Ideally, we'll have an Assistant Superintendent of Business by then, so I would say no, because with an Assistant Superintendent of Business, the budget would fall to that person.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Two point one nine. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cairns? Discussion.
I would just, um, mirror the concerns that I had when we discussed the personnel report that, um, you know, this was put out publicly, that this job was filled before this vote, this board voted on it. That, uh, you know, we're filling a position that we've never publicly had a conversation on before today. And, uh, you know, this, this could have been addressed some time ago, but never was. And now here, it was the day before school doing this.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, two point two five. Code of Conduct. Is there a motion? Mr. Shapiro? Is there a second? Do you all have a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion.
I just had a question, um, on page twenty-one of the Code of Conduct. Uh, Board of Education may adopt in whole or in part the decision of the superintendent struck out. The scope of the board's review shall include appeals regarding the superintendent's findings of guilt upon the charge or charges and/or penalty determination. I don't understand the, the language difference. Um, I don't know if it's something that came from our school board attorney. Where did this change?
That came from, uh, Darren Shaw.
Thank you.
Was there a specific reason for the change?
He just said this, the language is better, the, the way that he, uh, he did it, he spells it out, I think, more clearly. Instead of a, adopted whole or in part, it's specifically staying whether the findings of guilt in or the penalty determination. Explain what those two parts are.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to, uh, three point zero one, which is an information item, um, to discuss the use of, for introduction of Styrofoam trays into, um, into our schools.
Actually, the removable.
Uh, removable. Sorry.
So dur, yes, during the year, last year, we stopped purchasing Styrofoam trays and started purchasing paper trays. All of our Styro, we used up the ones we had. Um, all of the Styrofoam trays are now gone. And so we are using paper trays in, um, all of our buildings. Um, it, it's not necessarily Styrofoam trays, but I do have a little more information about the trays, which goes back to one of the presentations we got from the green team. So if you want me to continue on, I can.
Yep, sure.
Okay. So we're using the paper trays and the good thing about paper trays is that they disintegrate, that Styrofoam trays don't. The problem with paper trays is they also don't do great with liquids. So they get wet quick, um, and, and don't really hold the liquid well. So we are having a little bit of a challenge with that. Um, also, if you remember, we had the green team come and talk about, um, reusable trays. And so, um, Mrs. Isoldi met with the green team, um, at the middle school and looked into the use, reusable trays. The challenges with that are, first, you have to purchase a dishwasher. Um, at some place like the middle school, you have to purchase a lot of dishwashers or run them continuously, which also means you need an employee doing that. The dishwashers also wash the dishes, but they don't dry the dishes the way our dishes do at home. So, um, there's a, a challenge there in terms of space, personnel needed, uh, water usage. And, and it's just not as efficient as one would think when you're talking about the volume. In the elementary schools, one of the challenges we have is we don't necessarily even have a space to put the dishwasher because the cafeterias are so much smaller. So it's not that that's off the table, it's just much more complicated than what I think all of us thought it would be. So a couple of other things we've looked at, so, um, Ms. Isoldi has, as I said, met with the green team. There's been some brainstorming sessions, um, which included looking into recyclable Styrofoam trays, um, that they sort of turn the Styrofoam into bricks that can be used for other things such as lining a garden. Um, we also looked into, uh, the company, there's a company in Yonkers that recycle Styrofoam trays, but they won't come to Severn to get the recyclable trays. So that's a logistics challenge we don't have a solution to. So for now, we have switched to paper trays, but we are still very interested in looking for a long-term viable solution. We just haven't found one yet that is environmentally friendly, efficient, affordable, and works in the space and with the personnel we have. But it's an ongoing, um, you know, uh, research into it and open to, uh, suggestions and looking into it.
Thank you. Any questions?
That took three minutes. I'm sorry, we couldn't have done it at the last meeting, but anyway, um, I would really suggest that, uh, Ms. Isoldi continue to work with the green team. One of the best opportunities here is the students brought the problem and the solution to the board. Okay, we haven't figured out exactly that solution, but continue to bring the students in. Uh, and, you know, I think eventually they'll come up with a great idea that we should be able to pass. Maybe they can figure out something in terms of the logistics, in terms of if you have to take the trays to, is it Mount Vernon?
The Yonkers.
The Yonkers, okay. That doesn't seem out of the ordinary or hiring, you know, someone to do that. But, you know, I would leave it in the hands of the students, they're your best customers.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they want to add? Okay, let's move on. Okay. Discussion items, four point zero one, Administrative Hiring Committee. I'll open the floor.
Okay, so, um, I, I requested that, um, myself and other board members requested that this be the discussion item on the E20 agenda, uh, but it was not allowed for whatever reason. Um, I then, at the meeting, um, made a motion to have it added as a, as a discussion item and that motion failed for whatever reason. And so now it's on the agenda for today. We have had this Hiring Committee on there and there's been several email exchanges between board members regarding this. And, um, the reason why this absolutely had to be on as a discussion item and today and could not be on as an action item was because, um, we didn't clearly have delineated the, um, the scope of what the Administrative Hiring Committee does. Hold in my hand the agenda from September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, when, um, the Administrative Hiring Committee met. And it clearly delineates in several bullet points and numbered the goals, the mission. There was reports from the Assistant Superintendent of HR. Committee discussed the HR office, you know, everything that happened at this. So everything is very clearly delineated in the, the meeting minutes. Um, and it was discussed prior. So I, I don't understand why, if this was all discussed and it was a committee of the whole, why this couldn't be on the agenda as an action item when all of the reasons that I was given for it not being on as an action item are very clearly in this document that I hold in my hand. And, um, I'd just like to find out why that.
I think the reason is because you have different people on this board who have different opinions about what the Hiring Committee should be. And since the committee doesn't exist anymore, we have an opportunity to create a committee that the majority of people on this board are comfortable with, instead of using what was pushed through last year. So that's why we're having a discussion about it, so that everybody can voice their opinion and say what they believe should be part of a committee or not be part of the committee.
So, so we could have, we could create a whole new position, pay people a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year and vote on that tonight, but we can't vote on a committee tonight and have the discussion here.
I think we already discussed the position, so why don't we stick to the committee?
Well, I'm just saying, if we can, if we can create a position that we've never had in this district before and pay somebody a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we can have that discussion and then vote. But we can't do it on an Administrative Hiring Committee, which doesn't use the allocation of funds and is a committee of the whole. It's everybody sitting at this table. It's not any faction of the board where somebody can go in and, and have a conversation and bring that to the board. It's, it's everybody sitting at this table that would be a part of it, that would be there to talk about it. So I, I just don't understand why this couldn't have been an action item. If we can create a position, why can't we have this, this committee?
Okay, I already explained why it's a discussion item. So if we want to discuss it, let's discuss it, and if we don't, let's move on.
Okay, so, again, it, it should, it should be on for action, but if, if that's the case and we have to wait another two weeks for that to happen with all the hiring, with, with the hiring that...
Wow.
Oh, sweet. Well, listen, all I'm saying is...
Or so you can't put it on for action.
What I'm saying is, the majority may feel that it's not necessary.
Then I guess, much like the other positions, if we just create it, that this won't be discusseded, that we could just not even bother having this discussion too.
Let's discuss it.
You, you just vote four-three and that's it. Right, that's the way it works, huh?
Well, that would be the majority, but...
I'm just saying, it just...
How do you have a vote for something if it's not on the agenda? Like, I don't understand what you keep saying that we don't put this on the agenda because we don't have four-three. We, we don't have a majority that wants it on the agenda. If, if board members ask for something to be on the agenda, it should be on the agenda. That's what the policy says. Any one board member can bring something to be on the agenda. It just seems that certain things don't get on the agenda while other things do. And we're talking about transparency, but we're not really, aren't we?
Mr. Shapiro?
Okay, I, I think that if, and I'm sure if I go back, I can probably find the same paper that you have in your hand, but let's put it on the, the agenda as an action item for next September seventeenth, right? All right, let's put it on there. If you can make copies of that, Angus.
Sure.
All right, and if you can get them to all of us so that we can look at it. Let's, let's do some homework over the next two, two weeks. Let's take a look at it, let's take a look. If we feel that, uh, some changes should be made, if you're in favor of it. If we, if you're not in favor of it, then you don't really have a homework assignment. But we should still take a look at it and maybe there's some good, good things in there that we could use. Um, and we had some discussion about it and, um, let's make it an action item, all right?
And in fairness to Mr. Cairns, you weren't, you weren't at this meeting, so, so you may not have known, but, um, Mr. Shapiro, Mr. Donnelly, you were both at the meeting, I was there. Oh, wait, no, you were there, right, I'm sorry, you were there, right. And, um, yeah, everybody was there, so, um, so...
I'm just saying, I want to talk to them.
Yeah, the whole purpose of having the conversation was so that people, yep, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, can, can we have a preliminary discussion now about, because I wasn't at this meeting and I wasn't in part of the Administrative Hiring Committee, so I'd like to have a discussion, if you could, about what exactly we did and how does that differ from what the board does in terms of voting on superintendents?
And that was really the whole point of having this as a discussion item, was to set parameters to discuss what we want to see in a committee and what we don't.
Because, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I think having as much information as we can in the hiring process, because we're voting on recommendations, is very important. However, you know, when you go through all the training, we've all went through the train, the board training, they say we should not be managing the day-to-day operations. So for me, that kind of contradiction is something that I'm a little nervous about in terms of this committee. I see the committee as an observational information gathering committee, and if that's, if that's what it is, then I fully support that. Um, I also see the committee as something that should be used for higher level hires as well. So if I'm stating what was happening with the committee last year, you know, I certainly can be in favor of that. So that, that's been my feelings, I don't know if you're feeling as, I don't know if...
That's exactly the, uh, reason why we created it. The whole idea was simply to, um, the, the board, all, all members of the board have an opportunity to speak to the candidates who the superintendent has put forth, okay? We do not, you know, come in and say, this is the candidate, you know, you shouldn't really select or anything else. It's an opportunity before we vote on, you know, hiring them, but at least to meet them, okay? And speak to them and find out who they are and so forth. That's all, and what you said, Chris, is exactly the reason why we wanted to do that. We're not basically hiring. The superintendent still has that authority and, and responsibility and power, okay? That's all it is.
When we created this initially, there was quite a bit of resistance, not just from members on the board, but the superintendent at the time, uh, members of the unions were very concerned about how far down the chain this was gonna go. And it was only used in, for the purposes of hiring people in the central office. That was the only way it was used. People, people were on, and quite, that's how we ended up partially with Mr. Donnelly. We, we had discussions about the finalists, the finalists that were, um, down, we, that were brought forth by the superintendent at the time. So it's, it has nothing to do with, um, us meddling with the superintendent's will and who they want to work with. That entirely lies with the superintendent. At the end of the day, we can vote no if we don't like the person that they bring forward.
As, as a devil's advocate though, how is that different than what's happening now? Like, I don't, I don't know, like, how the process is now, but how is that different than the superintendent, uh, and staff will interview people, make two or three recommendations to us, and then the board gets to interview those people? Is that, I don't, I might be wrong, I might be misreading what actually happens, but what is the difference between Hiring Committee and what is happening now?
There was only, um, well, in, in terms of basically just what, what happened tonight, what we just voted on, one person was brought forth in the past and you either voted on a real thing...
So it was always one person?
Just one person.
Yes or no, you didn't get two or three people to look at as the process was going?
Right, and it's, and quite honestly, it's, it's not even fair to the person that you bring in forth, especially if it's rushed, because if people are up here voting no, it's an embarrassment to that person. You know, if they're just skating by with a four-three vote or, you know, they don't, say they don't get appointed for that matter, which did happen last year, it, it could be an embarrassment to that person. So if you're properly vetting these people, the people that are...
Involved in the process.
Yeah, and you're involved in the process, you can understand the people that, instead of just it coming before you, you understand that who the person is when you're voting for them. And it gives you the opportunity to not just see a name on a piece of paper, but put the name to the face and say, yeah, I like that person, or I didn't like that person. Vote no or vote yes, whatever you choose. You have a, you have a back and forth with them. It was a great discussion and I think all the board members who were, were in that really agree and said, wow, that candidate is really the best one. And we all had a great feeling of, we, we had a discussion, okay? And that's part of that whole concept of communication that we want to try to get here, okay? We're not taking any power, usurping any power from the superintendent or going down and trying to select teachers or whatever the case may be. That's not the reason, okay? And it really worked out, what do you think, Claire?
And it really worked out, what do you think, Claire?
It worked out great. But the point is that us meeting Larry and another candidate had zero bearing on the recommendation from the superintendent to hire them. So whether or not, whether or not we had met him, would have made no difference, he still would have been sitting there.
You can't say that. Maybe it didn't for you, but it may have for other people that voted for him. You understand what I mean? Maybe you would have voted for him anyway, that's possible, but maybe I wouldn't have, maybe Melissa wouldn't have, who knows? Maybe we would have, you know, felt uncomfortable had we not met him. Like, who is this guy? I don't, I don't know. I'm glad I met him, because he's been doing a great job for bringing him. And even the superintendent that brought it forward and adamantly opposed it, said, now that I see what's going on, I'm not against this, I think that it's fine.
So I... It was a discussion by all the board members. That's the, that's the concept that we're trying to put in.
The other important piece to this is that when you have an administrative committee, hiring committee, it's not done during executive session. So it wouldn't be that the public is waiting for us to finish up, to come back down, to do our regular scheduled meeting. It's something that can be called on a different day, and you start the meeting, you go into executive, but it's not like the public is sitting here waiting for us to come out.
And I'd like to know, if we go forward with this committee, what level does it stop? Are we only talking about administration? Are we talking about director level and above? Or are we leaving that open for us to say we want to meet an assistant principal or candidates for that position? Because to me, we're getting, again, and this is how I feel about this committee to begin with, is we're getting too deep in the weeds. And if we're going to even consider having this committee, I think it needs to have parameters and guidelines.
Well, I think that's the whole idea of, if Angus can get us the copies of all of that, then once again, I could go back and find my own.
I'll scan it.
Right, but I'd like to know what everybody's opinion is on that.
Okay, well...
Well, I'm for director, assistant superintendent level, and I don't think lower than that.
Absolutely, that's my view.
I agree. That's what it was created for.
In the administrative committee, it was support the administration in including search process for district leadership positions, leading to a successful recommendation by the superintendent, but it was leadership positions.
Yeah, so it's not specific to...
That's a good one. That's a good one.
I think it'd be a amendment, because, I mean, if that's what this board decided, this is what the previous board decided. If that's what this board decides, then so be it, but you can...
Well, that's my fear, is if it goes down to teachers, all that.
No, I don't think that was ever the intention.
No, I'm not saying what, I'm just saying that was why I want to clarify all those people that, you know, are coming in.
So if this goes as an action item for the next meeting, it'll be clearly defined as a committee that will only be involved with directors and above. Nothing at the building level.
Okay.
If I may, Matt, at this time? Okay, I think we have enough checks and balances within the system here. The panel that is set up by the superintendent, acting superintendent, the interview process that the candidates meet at first, and who they pass on for the superintendent, acting superintendent, the administrative, Mr. Matoney. I think we have enough input by the time we get a recommendation, that we don't need the hiring. That's just my opinion, it was the original, and I'm not supporting an additional.
I echo Mr. Donnelly, I feel the same way, but the majority of the board here would like to move forward, then that's what we will do. And it'll be on as an action item with the set parameters for the next meeting. Any other conversation about this before we close the discussion? Then let's move on. Board member comments? Board of comments?
I would just like to thank the facilities department, John Palmer, for the tour that they gave us of the facilities on Thursday. Very good to see the work they do and how they present it to you, and I just want to publicly thank them for all their efforts.
Thank you.
I'd just like to wish the faculty, if I could, I'm sorry, if I could, just thank you for everything you do. I wish you all a great year. I know, I know you're gonna get the light bulbs out there and get everybody to the shore. Thank you very much, you guys are great. Our secretaries, our custodians, everybody, the staff. I wish you just a great super year. Coach, eight though, nine though.
Are there any teachers in the audience? I knew the answer, as a former teacher. You know, tonight, okay, a lot of teachers here will be rolling over in their beds and thinking and trying to figure out, how should I start tomorrow? If you ever saw the film To Start With Love and so forth, you understand that every year is a new year, and you fall in love with your students in a nice way, but the point is that you basically in June, okay, have left them at that point, and they've left you, and now it's a chance to start all over again. So, you know, congratulations to all the teachers. I hope they take some nodos or something tomorrow, and have a great year. And the students also will enjoy their teachers. I'm happy that, you know, the assignments have been corrected and so forth for everyone, and to make everyone happy on that. But also for the parents, when you send them off, okay, that you know that there's bus safety, there's school safety, and your child is going to be learning in an academic setting, and they're going to be safe and sound in the classroom and also on the playing fields. So hopefully it's a great year. Oh, one last thing? I'm so happy that there is finally a coach for the robotics team in the school system now, in terms of the high school, but I hope that the administration will continually look to have a teacher, a new teacher who is not tendered yet and is looking to, you know, make some points, to become a robotics teacher in the Suffolk Middle School, and, you know, make that program in the elementary and have it feed into the Suffolk Middle School, old school, and then go to the high school. You have a fantastic robotics program at the level up here in the high school, but you really have to have those feeder programs going into it. And we know, okay, that this past year, as you know, the students, females in particular, were involved in the program. They're going into engineering, computer skills, coding and everything else. It's a fantastic program that can really be for not only the students who are on the higher level of going into engineering, but also for other students who get involved and have a program that they can really participate in and learn from in a very, very nice way. So hopefully, we'll work with the teacher union, I think there's someone in the audience on that, who might maybe suggest a faculty member for the Suffolk Middle School and get that program going. It's a good program, and you saw last year how well they did, and I think that's one of the best things that the district is moving forward into the 21st century with programs like that. Now, there's another program about chess, I don't know if you know...
You're over time, you might want to hold that one for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll save that one for next, two weeks from now. I just wanted to echo what Dr. Nick Palmer was saying about the facilities that we went through this past week. I wanted to commend the custodians and the maintenance crew, everything looked fabulous, shiny and clean. I'm sure the kids will destroy it by tomorrow afternoon, but everything looked wonderful, they really did a great job, and I just wanted to commend Mr. Palmer himself on the project of restoring, or putting in new transformers at the Slough'sburg School. We allocated almost, I think it was $400,000 to put the transformer in. He was able to put it in for $95,000 and saved the district over $300,000. And that's the reason why, that's the reason why he was put in that position, so that rather than actually installing the transformer and wiring things and everything else, that he could put his mind to his job, and he really did a fantastic job and saved the district a lot of money. So I want to say thank you to him and a job welcome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. Age, age before beauty, is that what you're saying? No, age before beauty. I wish all the parents a safe and a productive year for all of your children, and a year of very few headaches. To the staff, a wonderful year, both teachers, secretaries, custodians, administrators. Let 2019 to 2020 be a terrific year. There's so much that this district has to offer, and I hope that all of us can take advantage of it, and that the students come out great, and the parents are happy, and the staff is happy, and someone's lottery, so we can be happy.
I just had a couple of points to make tonight. I agree with all students and teachers and parents. I wish you a best year, a lot of success. And I just wanted to say that after hearing from my constituents, I requested a special meeting to address the scheduling issue. Unfortunately, a quorum was not established. Since the meeting could not take place, I asked that the parents and the students received an updated schedule as soon as possible, and I want to thank Lee Weber for following my request and getting those schedules out to the parents and the students via email. My second point tonight is, the general fund of the school district is the main place that money comes in and out of the school district. If you look at the balance sheet of the Suffolk Central School District, you will see the fund balance, which includes a number of lines. Most are labeled as reserves. The district has over $30 million of reserve balances. This shows that the school district has over-collected tax money from the citizens of Suffolk Central School District. What does over-collection mean? It's an English term. It means excessive collection, as in taxes. This $30 million belongs to the taxpayers. I will fight to have a 0% tax increase for 2020, 2021. Our money belongs in our wallets and not in the school district's reserves. We can have a 0% tax increase without cutting programs, without layoffs, without making any difference to our district. Remember, 0%.
Thank you, I'd just like to say, it's getting late, and we want to get everybody out of here and get home and get your kids ready, but I do have to, just like a few other people up here, just thanks to facilities, because going through the buildings with John and everybody else was really fantastic. I mean, the amount of work that was done at all of our buildings, and we were able to see five out of seven, it really is phenomenal, the sidewalks, the transformers, everything they did really, so just, you know, my hat's off to John Palmer and his team. And with that, we'll move to public participation. This is public participation for any district-related matters. Please step to the podium if you have something to say. Please keep your comments to three minutes. This will be a 30-minute total period for comment. Please refrain from mentioning any students or employees.
My name is Ted Aaron, I live in Chestnut Ridge, and I'm here to talk about the K-Solar program. As you, I understand that that idea was brought to this group, in which you put the state with sponsors, the program, and put solar panels on the roof of the buildings. And I was gonna go through all spiel about the benefits, et cetera, et cetera, but I understand that you're quite knowledgeable, you all are quite knowledgeable about the program. My question is, what is the status of the program? There is an application to put in, about 20 or 30 school districts have done that type of thing. I wonder, have you put in the application?
That was a question that I had asked to put on the agenda, but it wasn't put on the agenda, sorry.
When will it be put on the agenda? It's a win-win situation. You have a situation, you save money. I have a list of, oops, I have Tompkins College Library, Tama River School District, Havestrough, Somers Middle School, Tyre Town, Rutgers University, they all have solar panel program, and they all save money. Right across the river, you got Somers Middle School. $27,000 a year is estimated that they're saving. What's the holdup? It's a win-win situation, my goodness gracious. By the way, I gave Mr. Palmer the information about six months ago. I left the information there. I've been away on vacation, went to other schools, went to Clockstown, went to Pearl River, et cetera, et cetera. Question is, where are you? I hope you will fill out the application. By the way, I have a copy of the application. If you want to, you can do it right now. Thank you.
If you could leave the copy, that would be great.
Right here.
I will just say briefly that as has been communicated to the board already, there will be a solar panel presentation at the next meeting on September 17th.
Thank you.
I hope that the next time I come, things will be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Abby Johnson, and I'm not the student liaison, but I am a senior at Suffolk High School, and I've been in this district since kindergarten. And given some comments made at some recent board meetings, I feel compelled to speak about my experience here over the past 12 years. Contrary to some comments recently made, I have never felt unsafe at any Suffolk Central setting. I've had numerous teachers who have supported me, nourished me, and fostered a positive learning environment. At no point in time have I ever felt unsafe or threatened at any building. Though I cannot speak for all students, and I cannot speculate on all teachers, I can say with confidence that I've had several amazing teachers, and I've had an overall positive experience throughout my elementary school, middle school, and high school. I am saddened to hear that some others have had some negative experiences, but surprised and dismayed that they have turned these into such harsh and personal attacks. I have always known Suffolk to be a tight-knit and positive community, and it frustrates me to see people attempting to portray the entire district in a negative light. Given my 12 years firsthand experience, I thought everyone should know that Suffolk is still a great place to go to school. I hope to hear more positive experiences going forward, and I hope that we can resolve our issues with that divisive attacks. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Heschelardi. I have two children in the district. I just wanted to briefly address the executive hiring committee, and I know you're gonna discuss this at a future date. I'm really hopeful that you keep it intact in whatever degree. I think that it would be really helpful. We've had so many leadership positions sit empty for years. Maybe the executive committee can actually help find some people that could fill some of these slots, like we found here. Welcome, and thank you very much.
All right. Seeing as we have no more speakers, we will close this portion of the meeting. Acting superintendent's closing comments.
I just, as many of the board members did, want to wish all of our students, staff, and families a terrific school year.
Thank you. Okay. Then at this time, we will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I want to stay here longer.
Are you sure?
You can vote it down. You can vote no.
So is there a motion? Ms. Reamer, there is second? Dr. Nickpon? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against?
I said aye.
All right. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.